Councilmember Favor, would you please let us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, council is grateful to have Pastor Isaac Goikach, the senior pastor of Iglesia Porte de Benediction, to pray with us. Pastor, welcome to council.
City Councilmembers, thank you very much for having me today. Let us bow our heads so that we can pray. Te damos gracias Dios en este día por tu amor y por tu misericordia. Te damos gracias por todas tus bendiciones sobre nuestras vidas. Y vengo ante tu presencia en este momento para presentarte estos líderes y la agenda del día de hoy, pidiendo por la cobertura de tu presencia y por la guianza de tu espíritu, oh Dios, para que se puedan tomar las decisiones correctas aquí en esta gran ciudad, Dios mío, donde se ha invocado el nombre de Jesucristo. Bendice, Dios mío, a cada persona que está aquí en el día de hoy, y que sobre todo hoy en este día que tú seas glorificado. Te pedimos esto y te damos gracias en el poderoso nombre de Jesús. Amén.
Thank you so much, Pastor. Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Barosa de Padilla, Favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion to suspend with the reading of the journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Barosa de Padilla, Favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Hearing none, the journal was approved. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to bear into the record?
Not at this time.
Thank you, madam. Clerk, we will go around the dais for updates and resolutions, starting with Councilmember Bankston.
Thank you, President Harden. Just one announcement, or really more of our continued update, but before that, I want to introduce a resolution of expression 0230-X dash 2024 to recognize September as sickle cell, as National Sickle Cell Awareness Month in the city of Columbus. September is National Sickle Cell Awareness Month. For those who are unfamiliar, sickle cell disease is an inherited blood disorder in which red blood cells can become sickle-shaped and hardened. The severity of sickle cell disease varies with many people facing a shortened life expectancy and a host of reoccurring debilitating and expensive health problems. There is no universal cure for this condition, and it disproportionately affects black and brown Americans across our country. In honor of Sickle Cell Awareness Month for the third year in a row, our office, in partnership with council, has set up several blood drives this month, with the next one taking place at 77 North Front Street. In addition to a lighting and award ceremony taking place tonight, follow a council meeting at 7:00 PM on the Marconi Boulevard Boulevard side of city council, so city hall. So encourage everyone, if you want to come out and celebrate with us, we'll be honoring some sickle cell warriors, as well as those that have been champions of sickle cell research, and we'll be doing that just after council meeting today. This event is open to the public, and there will be light food and refreshments will be served as well. Additionally, this year, we will be presenting this year's resolution to Ms. Annie Womack, who has been a tireless advocate for sickle cell disease, and we will do that again at the lighting ceremony today. So with that, I will move for adoption for resolution 0230-X dash 2024.
Bankston, Barosa de Padilla, Favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you, Council President. And for our announcements, we will continue with our weekly briefings on the current cyber security incident that the city is ongoing and facing. At this time, I'm going to have Director Sam Orth of our Department of Technology to come to the podium to give us that update. And also, I will see if our city attorney, do we have any updates at all from the city attorney as well? And we'll start with Director Orth.
Good evening, President Harden, President Lieutenant Dorance, not here, but anyways, Chair Bankston and distinguished members of council. I'm here tonight to provide an update on the cyber attack that has affected the city since July 18th. As I mentioned last week, the situation is of critical importance, impacting not only the administration, but also every resident of Columbus. We fully share the frustration that many feel due to the disruptions caused by these cyber criminals. We're committed to restoring our IT systems, supporting Columbus residents, and strengthening our defenses. Last week, I spoke about the foreign state-sponsored organized crime groups that cities across the country are up against. Cyber attacks like ours are not isolated incidents. Just last month, major companies like Young Consulting LLC and Park &amp; Fly had over 1 million records each stolen by cyber criminal organizations like Resita. Cyber attacks, cyber attacks are a growing threat, and we will not, we are not alone in this fight. These criminals continuously evolve, which means we too must enhance our defenses. It will require investments of time, personnel, and financial resources, but this is an essential step. The reality is, is that more attacks will come, and we must be ready. Today, our focus remains on three critical areas. Understanding the attack, we have a team of conducting forensic investigations to determine how the attackers gained access, which systems were compromised, and what they touched. RSM, the city's forensic expert, was on site the day the cyber attack was identified and immediately began its work. The second area is data forensics. We have a team analyzing what data was stolen, how many records were affected, and assessing the nature of the personal and confidential information that was compromised. We have several forensic experts working on this with our breach council, Dinsmore, including RSM, Haystack, and Digital Mint. These reports will take more time, but we will expect to have them by the end of October. Third is remediation and recovery. We're working tirelessly to secure our systems, harden them from, harden them against future attacks, and bring them back online. Again, RSM is working with DOT on these efforts. As I shared last week, this is an active and ongoing investigation, so there are details I'm unable to disclose at this time. However, I can confirm that significant process, progress has been made, and we expect to be able to share the report with council and the public by the end of October. As I summarized last week, while we were successful, we successfully prevented Resita from fully taking over our systems through a ransomware attack, they were still able to steal a large amount of personally identifiable information and sensitive data from the city, including crime information from several systems, legacy employee backups, visitors to city buildings, and locations of fire department runs. The sheer volume of records makes it impractical to notify everyone individually in a short period of time, though we continue with our data mining efforts and do anticipate sending out additional direct notifications. That's why on August 1st of this year, we partnered with Experian to offer two years of premium credit monitoring services at no cost to anyone affected by the breach. This includes all current and former city employees, Columbus residents, and non-residents whose personal information was shared with the city or the municipal court, and includes immediate family members, including minors. As of this morning, 2,799 city employees, 10,983 residents, and 234 minors have signed up. We strongly encourage all affected individuals to enroll by visiting dub 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 dot columbus.gov slash cyber before the November 29th deadline. Signing up is quick and straightforward, taking about 10 minutes. To assist, we've created a brief instructional video in both English and Spanish, which can be found on the city's website, social media, and at community centers, and we now like to share the video with you.
Cyber threats are closer than you think, but you can take steps to protect yourself. To support our community following a recent cyber attack, the city of Columbus encourages residents and anyone who has provided their information to the city to sign up for two years of free Experian credit monitoring. The program includes $1 million of protection against fraud and identity theft. To enroll, go to columbus.gov backslash cyber. Next, click on the button that applies to you. You can choose minors, former employees, or residents and other affected individuals. Then click on the link to enroll online, which will take you to the Experian website. Next, click on the Get Started button and follow the prompts to set up your account. You can also call 1-833-918-5161. Use the code B129832. Sign up by November 29th.
Thank you. Everyone should sign up. Our Department of Technology is working around the clock to restore and secure all our systems. Since last Monday's council update, we restored multiple systems for the auditor, public safety, DOT, health, public utilities, and the city treasurer. To date, 71% of the city's systems are fully restored, 8% are partially restored, and 21% are not restored. We are methodically working to harden and restore the remaining applications to assure our future security. There is no standard amount of time that it takes to recover from a cyber incident, as every organization's circumstances are different. However, most organizations have recovered within 150 days. Today, we are on day 60. While the timeline is challenging, our goal remains full restoration by September, October, and we will update you if that should change. In closing, I want to reiterate that cybercrime is a pervasive problem that affects governments, businesses, and citizens across the country. Columbus is not alone in this battle. We're committed to addressing the damage caused by this attack, supporting our residents, and building a stronger, more secure technological infrastructure for the future. I'd like to thank everyone in city government, especially city council, for your continued patience, understanding, and support. I'm now happy to answer any questions while remaining mindful of the ongoing investigation.
Thank you for that update, Director, and I know my, some of my colleagues may have questions, but one thing I just wanted to clear up, and I know you mentioned Dinsmore, and then we've entered into a contract with them. The mayor's currently working under emergency authority with that contract. Can you just talk about what the estimated billing is so far and what the maximum is on that contract? And also, I think you described it a little bit, and you could just reiterate, what does that contract entail, some of the work that they're doing for us?
President Harden, Chair Bankston, members of council, Dinsmore serves as the city's breach council, which we engaged them on July 19th, literally the morning after the attack, to work with federal and state law enforcement agencies and assist the city with incident response to the cyber attack. This includes providing legal counsel to the city regarding the incident response, guiding the city with its legal notice obligations, the data forensics and system forensics that I mentioned earlier, and our remediation efforts. They are also partnering with Experian to provide credit monitoring and identity theft protection services that we've talked about here this evening. Dinsmore, on behalf of the city, is working under contracts with RSM Security, Digital Mint, Experian, and Haystack. The billing is currently evolving due to ongoing work. The mayor's emergency was for $4 million, $3 million in operating and $1 million in capital cover, to cover all aspects of the incident response and remediation by the, by the entities I just identified, and ordinance will be submitted to council shortly.
Thank you for that, and I know you mentioned that we torted the actor in that last week when you updated us that they were not able to lock us out of our systems, which I think probably could be the worst-case scenario. But can you talk a little bit more about what systems we know definitively that were breached? And then also, again, could you talk about what that worst-case scenario could have been if we weren't able to act as quickly as we did?
President Harden, Chair Bankston, members of council, you know, unfortunately, given the ongoing investigation, I really can't talk about which systems were or were not breached, because it might tell the threat actor where to go attack next. But I can tell you that only a portion of the city's systems were impacted. There will be more details on that when the final forensics report comes out, to the extent that we're able. But, you know, to describe the worst-case scenario, imagine a 10-story apartment building with 500 apartments. In our case, the criminals got into some of the apartments and stole some of the belongings in the apartments, but in a worst-case scenario, the criminals would have taken control of the entire building, locked us out, and demanded a ransom to get back into the entire building. Certainly, the stolen belongings were of value. The data that was breached was sensitive in its nature, which is why we're offering Experian credit monitoring.
And thank you. And again, want to reiterate, folks should take advantage of that Experian monitoring, not just for this incident, but again, it is good for two years. And as we see, these data breaches are something that are becoming more and more common, and so we want to make sure residents are not just simply protected with the data they have with us, but they are protected going forward. One last question I have, and this is something I think has come up from time and time again with folks I've talked to, is around our IDs and how we're storing that data around facilities management. I know that we require IDs to get into the building and in many, mostly all buildings. With this, with this breach, is there, should we be looking at that policy of, one, is that something that we should continue to be doing? But two, if we are, how we're storing that data and what our retention schedule should be with that, those images?
Chair Bankston, certainly, you know, as we discussed last week, part of our recovery plans include reviewing, reviewing all city systems, especially our data storage practices. This falls under what we call data governance. We talked about that last week. Currently, each department determines their own records retention policies through the city's records commission. Through this process, DOT and the administration will partner with departments to evaluate their records retention policies. We will be examining our data retention policies, working with the records commission, exploring ways to make the process more efficient and secure. Data governance as well will be a key component of our recovery plan, which is being developed right now in collaboration with the mayor's office.
Thank you. And I know, again, as we continue to wait on that report, I know that there will be more questions at our upcoming hearing. Are any questions from my colleagues at this time? Everybody's, ladies, councilmember?
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. I will take your offer. Director, I know that you talked about where we could, there was public reporting that Park Mobile and if folks had used the Park Mobile app, that they may have been exposed to the breach. And I know that you went, you ticked through a number of ways that we know that data had been exposed. Can you talk about the extent of Park Mobile? And especially because I'm thinking, I know that from some residents, there's higher engagement. There might be some folks that aren't in the city of Columbus, that have come to the city of Columbus and use the app, and they may be, may have been exposed. Can you share a little bit more about what we know?
President Harden, Councilmember Barosa de Padilla, while it's certainly an ongoing investigation, I can say that, to our knowledge, Park Mobile data nor their systems were touched by the breach, but I would just reinforce that the investigation is still ongoing, and I certainly hope that that does not change.
Sure. Thank you. I just, I know that we've said this multiple times, but I think that folks, this is also even more of a reason that there are so many ways that people interact with the city and interface with the city. And so knowing that this was a risk, folks should take us up on this offer of ensuring that they have credit monitoring because, because of the multiple ways that you could have been, you know, exposed. So thank you for sharing what you can share, to the extent that you could share it. But again, I'm just making another point to folks that this is another way that may not have been. And even though we may not know whether that was a vulnerable point for us, we know that there is still potentially that risk, so.
Councilmember, just to follow up, as, as we talked here this evening and again last week, unfortunately, Columbus is not alone. We are not individually all alone in the number of occurrences of our data being breached. And it's just generally, this, whether we had this incident or not, it's just generally important, if you do online commerce, to be monitoring your credit and your dark web monitoring. And so it's certainly a great opportunity for residents to do that going forward. And we would also encourage, as we mentioned before, oftentimes, home insurers and banks also offer dark web monitoring. It's good to have more than one and to pay attention to them and remain vigilant.
Great. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much, Chair. Director, thank you again for you and your team's ongoing efforts. As we move forward and we start thinking about hardening our cybersecurity systems for future prevention, do you have an idea what that investment looks like, whether it's new staffing, you know, policies, training, et cetera?
President Harden, Councilmember Remy, you know, as I mentioned, certainly, right now, in the immediate future, we're focused on remediation. But as you point out, we have a lot of work ahead as a city on multiple fronts, and you've kind of mentioned those things. There's clearly going to be some new systems in our future. I don't know that we have, you know, really pricing on those yet. We're really kind of looking, taking a look at that and developing some budgetary estimates. We're certainly going to be sharing that with council in the future. When we look at cyber events generally, it's people, process, and technology. We just talked about processes that relates to data governance. But certainly, staff and staff resources, not just within DOT, but frankly, in the city generally, are going to be important going forward. That's due to a lot of things. It's not just the cybersecurity incidents, it's the growth in the use of IT within city departments. I think we all know and would agree that this event has really clearly, you know, shown us how important our IT is to the city as a whole. And while the technology has changed in my lifetime, it's still a people-driven business, so we need people to move forward. It's certainly going to take time to develop that into a comprehensive plan. We're focused, that's going to be both a short and a long-term plan. I mean, I think we have to think long-term. As I've said multiple times, these criminals are not going to stop coming at us, and so we need to continually be vigilant and continue to focus going forward. I would also tell you that many cities and organizations, the business community, many organizations that have been impacted by these types of events have kind of evolved their IT a certain way and kind of taken these moments to rethink how they approach IT. And I frankly think that's a healthy thing that we should do. And then I would just end by saying that despite everything we can do in the technology and being better in terms of standards and processes and things like that, beyond anything, human error remains our biggest concern. It was certainly true before this event, and it will also be true after this.
Are you doing anything, looking at best practices from other cities? I know, you know, I've reached out to Atlanta, Cleveland, Kansas City, Missouri was attacked in May, and just being on the National League of Cities Board, you know, it's given me the opportunity to reach out and ask, you know, what's, what's different? What are you doing that might be something that could be advantageous for us to look at in the future?
Councilmember Remy, certainly, there is just a, you know, you know, I don't know if it's good or bad. There's a plethora of information out there regarding cybersecurity and cyber incident response. Certainly, learning from others, whether they be private sector organizations or other cities, is really important. It's fair to say that no cyber attacks are equal. It's, so there are just generalizable things that we have to learn from that need to be part of that strategic plan going forward. There's also national, federal, and business security standards. In particular, the federal government has embraced something called NIST 853. That's a cybersecurity framework that we'll be looking at implementing. So, you know, there's also research and consulting organizations out there as well. So we are, we are kind of consuming, while we're trying to do the remediation, all that information as a way to help guide our framework and our plan going forward. So absolutely, certainly, having lived through this and anticipating, certainly personally been involved in other cyber events, never one of this scale, and they're always learnable and teachable moments.
Thank you, Director. Appreciate your ongoing work.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you to my colleagues, and again, thank you, Director, for giving us an update. We look forward to that report and hope that our breach council, Dinsmore, is moving at rapid speed so that we can have that hearing here shortly. And when, again, every Monday, when we have a council meeting, appreciate you being here to give us an update, you know, for us. When we talk about accountability in this incident, it's an ongoing thing. It's a journey for all of us to ensure that, one, we get to the bottom of the investigation, and the criminal aspect of it. We also have to get through lawsuits, and we'll get an update from our city attorney as well. But then the accountability is also going to be about how do we look at our systems and our policies moving forward and do that in partnership. And so, again, want to thank you for being here and look forward to more updates to come. Thank you.
Counsel.
At this time, Council President, I'm going to turn it over to our city attorney for a quick update and any questions from my colleagues for the city attorney's office. Mr. Sheen?
Thank you, Chair Bankston, President Harden, members of council. The city attorney's office has reached a preliminary agreement regarding the preliminary injunction lawsuit in the data breach incident regarding Mr. Ross. The agreement protects sensitive data exposed in the cyber intrusion from being disseminated, while also allowing Mr. Ross to maintain a dialogue with the city regarding the breach. Like the temporary restraining order that was issued on August 29th, this agreement does not impact Mr. Ross's ability to discuss the intrusion or describe what kinds of data were exposed, including to members, excuse me, of the media. The agreed preliminary injunction allows Mr. Ross to download any data he wants. He is prohibited from disseminating any city data that he has obtained and identifies personal identifiable information, which would include social security numbers, driver's license numbers, bank account information, credit card numbers, and personal medical information, among other sensitive information. He's also prohibited from disseminating any data from the city's matrix prosecutor or crime databases. However, he is permitted to disseminate any information that is subject to disclosure under the Ohio Public Records Act, because that information is already subject to a public records request. The agreed preliminary injunction also allows Mr. Ross to maintain dialogue with the city and to share data with officials as part of the ongoing investigation. However, we will reiterate that the city has no formal or business relationship with Mr. Ross at the present time. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from my colleagues for our city attorney? One, just one question regarding the reported breached data that is pertaining specifically to police cases and victims of crime. Can you describe what your office is doing now to prepare for any response to potential of that data being out there? So particularly thinking about those victims of domestic crime and other victims of crime, and for sure, our undercover officers who are out there putting their lives on the line. So if you could just give us some of your thoughts on that or what you all are doing?
Yes, yes. Thank you, Chair Bankston. The mission of the city attorney's office is, and always will be, to serve and protect victims in and out of the courtroom. Since this information became public, we have received a handful of calls from domestic violence survivors and witnesses from prior cases. When they call, we've developed an individual approach. We review the information we have in our system with each of them individually and troubleshoot to determine what concerns that person may have. And then, if we identify a mutual concern, we make a referral for assistance. For example, our office has been in communication with Choices, the Legal Aid Society, and the Center for Family Safety and Housing Healing, excuse me, who are ready and able to help them with any resources available, such as legal filings or other assistance they may need due to the cyber intrusion. intrusion. We support the mayor's decision to offer credit monitoring protections and encourage them to sign up before the November 29th deadline. Anyone who has a concern about their data being in our database can call the prosecutor division to review this information individually with a member of our team. And again, we will make referrals to resources that are available to help them.
Thank you for that. And just for the record, do you have that number?
Yes, sir. The main number for the prosecutor division is 614-645-7483.
Thank you, Mr. Shin. Seeing no questions or comments from my colleagues, Council President concludes our update for today. But again, just want to stress the importance of this. And as we have all discussed, this is a top priority for us, and we will continue to push and make sure that we're getting the answers for residents of Columbus.
Thank, thank you, Chair Bankston. And I will echo your appreciation and my colleagues' appreciation to the Department of Technology and specifically Director Orr. I think that just in these last two weeks, it is reassuring to hear the Director report out and, and give us as much information as we can. So, we too look forward to the upcoming public hearing and the report back from the folks who've been advising us on this. But thank you so much for your leadership. And please pass along our appreciation to the Department of Technology and all those folks who have been working now for eight weeks or so, nonstop, to keep our communities safe. Councilmember Rosa de Padilla.
Thank you, Council President. I have just a few announcements today. First, I would like to officially say Felicidades and Happy Latino Heritage Month, and thank everyone who came out and joined us this past Saturday for the official kickoff of Latino Heritage Month with the parade and festival. We had over 60 organizations that were represented in the parade and nearly 20 small businesses and organizations that were then participated here at the festival immediately following the parade. I want to thank the 500 or so residents that joined us and celebrated each year. The parade and the festival gets bigger and bigger, and it directly impacts our Latino community. So, I want to thank everybody for their support. I also want folks to save the date for October 18th for the Latino Arts Festival at Blackfoot. If you'd like to showcase your art, please submit an application by September 22nd. This will be a family-friendly event. We are excited to have live performances, arts activities, booths for children and families, food trucks, and more. For information on all things Latino heritage, please visit and follow our Instagram page, Latino Heritage Seabass, or the Columbus City Council page. And then, lastly, on September 24th, we will be having a hearing here in council chambers about a proposal for a commission on immigrant and refugee affairs. Folks can follow our social media pages for more information or to sign up to testify, or you can reach out directly to my office. And you should look, because everyone spells our names wrong, you should look on the council page to ensure that you are emailing the appropriate office and to get more information about that hearing. And that is all for me this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Faver.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight, just one resolution from my office to recognize September 2024 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Columbus. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Jocelyn Green and the Green family to the podium. Since 1990, we recognize September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. At this time of year, we recognize the extraordinary courage of the hundreds of thousands of children who are facing cancer, who survived cancer, or who were taken too soon by this deadly disease. We offer strength and support to their families and friends who care for their loved ones through every step of their cancer journeys. And we recommit to finally ending cancer as we know it is so that every child has the opportunity to realize their full potential and lead healthy, long-fulfilling lives. Cancer is the leading cause of death by disease for children in America. As every family who has dealt with cancer knows, of all the things cancer steals from us, time is the cruelest. So, many children who should be exploring our world are forced to spend their precious time confined to hospital rooms. During this National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, let us give strength to all the pediatric patients, their families, and their caretakers. With that, I now pass the podium over to the Green family.
Thank you all so much. Three years ago, I was diagnosed with T-cell acute lymphoblastic leukemia, and my treatment lasted for two and a half years. Luckily, I was able to ring the bell in early February and, and my treatment. All, even though not as kids are as lucky as me, and some of them are not able to win their battle, my shirt here is representing a girl named Ally. She sadly passed last fall, and, but she was an amazing advocate for childhood cancer, and I hope that I could carry on her legacy and continue to raise awareness to the cause. Thank you.
And the parents are more than welcome to make any remarks they'd like to. No? We talked about this out in the hallway. Well, with that being said, do my colleagues have any thoughts they'd like to offer at this time? Councilmember Rosa de Padilla.
I was just going to say thank you for being here. And you know that you're brave when your parents are saying no and you're saying yes. So, that is way more than anybody your age should have to deal with. And this is a fight that you should not have to take on, but thank you for doing so. And it shows your bravery, your strength, and your resilience. And so, I'm sure that all of us collectively can one day find a cure for cancer, but it takes the will and the grit of people like you. And so, thank you for being here today.
Thank you so much.
And, you know, I would also offer, just thank you once again for being willing to share your story. And not just share your story, but also uplift the lives of those who were unable to ring the bell. And so, as we present this resolution to you, I'd offer the audience to give a resounding round of applause, because to be able to ring the bell is absolutely amazing. And to do so at such a young age, it is more than one should have to, to carry. And so, to the parents, thank you for your strength and resiliency as well in supporting your child, but also giving her permission to do exactly what she's doing and advocating on behalf of others. With that, I'd move for her passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Rosa de Padilla, favor Green, Rimi Weich, President Harden.
Adopt it.
And we have some yellow ribbons that we will gladly put on tonight as well. Thank you, Council President Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember Faver. Councilmember Green.
Thank you so much, President Harden. Tonight, I just have one resolution on the agenda. It's Resolution 0244X-2024, to celebrate Columbus Public Health as the National Association of County and City Health Officials, or NACHO's 2024 National Champion of Local Government Public Health. It is an award that CPH was awarded just this year due to their exemplary work in addressing racism as a public health crisis, including anti-violence programs, childhood lead-free initiatives, and comprehensive citywide flavored tobacco bans. Before I go any further, though, I do know we have one person that is speaking on this resolution. His name is Charles Robel. Mr. Robel, if you're here, I would like to invite you up really fast to say what you're going to say.
Thanks. So, I'm the Social Justice General. I'm here just to try to bring integrity to the city. Unfortunately, Commissioner Roberts, we'll just, so yeah, Commissioner Roberts, on February 18th, 2021, constructed informed consent as you understand what you're doing, you understand the risk. And then she also constructed it as you know exactly what you're getting into. And then, also on February 18th, 2021, she asserted that if you took the experimental COVID vaccines, you would not get sick. And then, on March 28th, 2021, Roberts, you repeatedly said that, you know, if people got vaccinated, they wouldn't die or be hospitalized if they, you know, took these experimental, experimental vaccines. Dr. Leon McDougall of Ohio State also parroted that. He said, no deaths or hospitalizations of people who are in the vaccinated group. And the problem with that is that on February 9th, 2021, it was widely reported in the Cincinnati media market, the death of two Northern Kentucky nuns at the St. Walburg monastery. After they were vaccinated, they died with COVID supposedly. So, I mean, were you aware of those nuns when you gave this testimony?
Mr. Robel, you're, you're addressing council, not the administration.
Okay. Well, so yeah, I just, I hope that y'all, you know, stick up for informed consent and stick up for having medical treatment be voluntary and people knowing the risks of what they do. Because, I mean, it seems very clear that you get, you can get sick if you take these experimental COVID vaccines. And it seems very clear that you can die with COVID if you take these experimental COVID vaccines. And now, now expert, Dr. Francis Boyle, who drafted the 1989 Bioweapons Convention, or our, our adoption of the convention, he's now saying that these vaccines are Nuremberg crime and crime against humanity, which I also asked Roberts to explain.
Again, you are addressing council.
Okay. So, yeah, I don't know. I, I just don't know why you guys do this. And then, you know, I'd also like to get to the bottom of Brian Shin's radical theory that we, we're not allowed to amend the charter and give people a choice of what, what they're forced by the charter to call this city. So, thanks for your time. I'm waiting until next week for you guys to do the right thing and to let people know what Roberts did to us and what OSU did to us. So, thanks so much for your time. Have a great rest of the summer. I hope you guys reject this ridiculous resolution. Columbus should not be a model that's emulated. Columbus is an embarrassment. All right. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Robel. One thing that I would like to share with you is my perception on what Dr. Roberts has done for us, has done for this city and has done for this state. She has saved lives, thousands of them, millions of them. And were it not for her leadership, the city would be in a much more challenging place in terms of our response to COVID-19. Not only is it rare for a local health department to have an actual MD as the leader of it, as their health commissioner, Dr. Roberts has prepared her entire life for the, for the crisis that befell us here in the United States. She is a renowned expert in infectious disease, and we are endlessly grateful to her for her service and for her leadership and the way that she advised not just our city, but also advised our partners at the state. And so, thank you, Dr. Roberts. So, as we were saying, we are here today to celebrate the absolutely incredible achievement that Columbus Public Health has received, receiving NACHO's 2024 National Champion of Local Government and Public Health Award. CPH was selected for this award due to their exemplary work in addressing those issues that I already previously mentioned, racism as a public health crisis, and especially our anti-violence work, childhood lead-free initiatives, and passing a comprehensive citywide flavored tobacco plan, which, similar to your response during COVID-19, has absolutely and will continue to save lives. CPH's commitment to innovation and their approach to advancing health equity work has elevated critical public health priorities on the local, state, and national stage. And you can see that all around us as, as neighboring municipalities are beginning to take note and are changing their policies as well. And so, Dr. Roberts, we'd like to invite you up to the podium here, should you want to come. It is absolutely an honor to have you here tonight. And again, we can't, we'll never be able to thank you enough for everything you've done for the city. And so, I'd like to invite you to say a few words about this incredible achievement.
Well, good evening, and Council President Harden, Councilmember Green, and all council members this evening. Thank you. Thanks again for your support. I really do appreciate that. We could not have received this award without the support of all of you, this community, Mayor Ginther, and the administration. We've worked really hard to really put racism as a public health issue on the forefront. And some of the things that we were able to do was because of the support of city council. So, you mentioned the flavored tobacco ban. We would not have been able to do that without the support of Columbus City Council. All the things that we did collectively during the pandemic, we needed the support of city council to help us, whether it was mask orders, mask mandates, or guidance of things like that. So, I appreciate your support, but most importantly, I have to acknowledge my staff. I have 500 incredible, dedicated, public health professionals that help me keep this community healthy and safe every single day. And I am so proud of them, so grateful for them. And I know that I could not do this alone without them, without you, without the mayor, and with all the residents behind us, supporting us. So, thank you so much. I appreciate this acknowledgement this evening.
Thank you for all the work you do. Do any of my colleagues have any comments or things they'd like to share? Okay. Well, seeing none, then I move for adoption. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Councilmember Green, I just think, I just want to take just a moment, because I think that, I appreciate your comments. And I think that in a moment like this, where there is continued false narratives and rhetoric that is put out about any myriad of issues in our community, this is a place where people look to their leaders, especially when we have a platform for righteousness, for good, for justice, for accurate information. And it is continuously on us to treat that with respect and with responsibility. And I think that we've seen that over and over and over again. And so, I cannot stress enough in this moment, that especially as we are dealing with a health crisis, a continued health crisis, the effects of a health crisis, that we are leading with people who are brave, with, that we are leading with data and actual facts to ensure that we are taking care of our people, because that's actually our jobs. So, I just want to, again, just commend you. This is not about opinions. It's about data, and it's about ensuring that there is truth out in our community. So, thank you, Dr. Roberts, for your continued work, that in the way that you lead, in the way that you lead our community and ensure that people are healthy and taken care of. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I very proudly move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Rosa de Padilla, favor Green, Rimi Weich, President Harden.
Adopt it. Mr. Robel, Mr. Robel, this is a public meeting, and if you continue to disrupt it, you will be asked to leave. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, President Harden. That's all I have in my committee. Or, not my committee, but.
We're coming down. Councilmember Rimi.
Thank you very much, Council President. Last week was Public Safety Week, and we're excited to share that it was an incredible success throughout the entire week of safety-related events, including a community conversation, virtual training series, a neighborhood block party at Linden Rec Center and litter pickup. And then, we also partnered with Pelotonia for a kid's bike ride in Linden Saturday morning. We were able to connect residents and our first responders on a one-on-one level and provide residents critical safety equipment to help keep themselves and their neighbors safe. Over the week, we gave out hundreds of smoke alarms, fire extinguishers, steering wheel clubs, personal safety alarms, and litter grabbers directly to the residents. So, I want to give a heartfelt thanks to the Columbus Division of Police and Columbus Division of Fire for all of their support this week, their officers and cadets that all came out to help, that went above and beyond to show up for the community. I also want to specifically thank my team, Kalen Pittman, Avery Townsend, and Cole Callaway, for their work in making it a spectacular event of collaboration and making our city a safer place to live, work, and raise a family. I'd like to just quickly thank our sponsors and partners, City of Columbus, Wrexham Parks, Department of Neighborhoods, Linden Community Center, St. Stevens Community House New Salem, Community of Caring Development Foundation. We are Linden, Columbus City Schools ambassadors, North Linden and South Linden area commissions, Pelotonia Kids, Nationwide Children's, Law Enforcement Action Partnership, and Mothers of Murdered Columbus Children, or Children of Columbus. My greatest hope, though, is that we come away from last week is that our residents feel a little safer and a little more connected to our first responders that served them. I also want to point out that I believe that Councilmember Dorns, or Council President Pro Tem Dorn- Pro Tem Dorns, isn't here tonight because, do you still, do we have that tape? No, we don't have it. But there was a race to the top of a rock wall and this old man beat the younger man in 15 seconds. So very proud of that achievement. So thank you very much. It was a great week. We look forward to next year.
Thank you, old man. No, Councilmember, seriously, you gave a lot of appreciation to a lot of departments and a lot of folks that had a hand in creating the second very successful Safety Week, but I think a lot of appreciation goes to you for focusing this community on bringing community and our safety officials together. A lot of us on council and the administration attended the several, the many events that you planned this week and you could see true community happening there. So just thank you in your office.
Councilmember Weich.
First, let me say, I was there. I saw that race. I feel like, Rob, let him win. So let's just start there. Also want to continue to promote and request everyone's assistance in spreading the word. The Act With Us Use Art Contest is open for K-12 students who live in Columbus, regardless of school district. Participants will create a reduced reuse recycle poster encouraging sustainable practices. The winning design will be displayed in Columbus City Council offices and other City of Columbus facilities. The deadline to submit a design is October 7th. I want to encourage everyone to visit columbus.gov/actwithus to learn more and to submit your design. Next, I'd like to invite the Department of Public Utilities, Division of Sewage and Drainages teams from the Jackson Pike Water Reclamation Plant and the Southerly Water Reclamation Plant. These two teams received national recognition for excellence in wastewater treatment and compliance from the National Association of Clean Water Agencies. For 50 years, the National Association of Clean Water Agencies has been the nation's recognized leader in legislative, regulatory, and legal advocacy on the full spectrum of clean water issues. The Jackson Pike Water Reclamation Plant was awarded the Platinum Peak Performance Award for 100% compliance over a five-year period, and the Southerly Water Reclamation Plant received the Gold Peak Performance Award for one year of perfect compliance. We have two resolutions to celebrate their work. First, I have 0238X-2024 to celebrate and recognize the City of Columbus's Department of Public Utilities, Division of Sewage and Drainage, Jackson Pike Water Reclamation Plant for receiving the National Association of Clean Water Agencies Platinum Peak Performance Award. Stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage, or adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. And second, I have 0239X-2024 to celebrate and recognize the City of Columbus's Department of Public Utilities, Division of Sewage and Drainage, Southerly Water Reclamation Plant for receiving the National Association of Clean Water Agencies Gold Peak Performance Award. If there are no questions on that one, I would move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. I want to thank you both and your teams for all your hard work, determination, and commitment to excellence. We all want the best when it comes to our waterways and you have shown over and over that Columbus Division of Public Utilities has the best. I have no doubt that in another four years, the Southerly Plant will receive the Platinum Peak Performance Award, but we won't hold you to it starting today. Rob, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, good evening, President Harden, Public Utilities Chair Weich, and members of council. I'm Rob Presis. I'm the administrator for the Department of Public Utilities, Division of Sewage and Drainage. On behalf of the staff at Jackson Pike and our Southerly Water Reclamation Facilities, we thank you for this recognition. And in four years, we're hopefully back here with a platinum for Southerly. Our awards from National Association of Clean Water Agencies demonstrate the commitment of our staff that operate a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week, 365-day-a-year facility that shows their commitment to environmental compliance and protection of our water resources. We're proud to receive these awards, the Platinum for Jackson Pike and our Gold for Southerly. Platinum eight years straight for a Jackson Pike facility and first time notching up to gold and looking to pursue that Platinum for a Southerly facility. But it's pretty impressive for the size and nature of the facilities that we operate and the complexity of these facilities and the thought that we treat anywhere on average between 60 and 70 billion gallons of sanitary and stormwater flows per year, for us to be able to that consistent and have that achievement with regulatory compliance. Our plants have a long history of award-winning performance and environmental compliance and we appreciate the support of city council and continue that tradition. With me today, I have our Assistant Administrator, Stacia Eckenweiler, who oversees our treatment arm. And although they couldn't be here with us today, I really want to extend a special thank you to our plant managers, Jim Weber and Doug Dixon, and the more than 162 dedicated staff at our plants that really made this possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Director, did you want to add any additional remarks?
President Harden, members of council, it's an honor for the Department of Public Utilities to be recognized by the city council with this resolution and for achieving the Naqua Platinum and Gold awards. It shows a dedication and commitment that our administrators and employees have in ensuring we have safe, clean, and efficient wastewater services for the Columbus region. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Any questions, comments from my colleagues? Tina, can we just give them a round of applause because this is really a big one.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. I just have one announcement and that is that tomorrow, September 17th, is National Voter Registration Day. This council has already passed a resolution of consent honoring the occasion, but wanted to take the time to not just encourage people to register to vote because in Columbus, I know that we all are registered, right? Yes. But no, we want to make sure that we're registering, registering our family and friends. But what I'm encouraging everyone and all of us to do is check your voter registration status. There are a lot of changes happening. Sometimes we even make those changes and we don't think to go back and check to make sure if we moved or something. But even if you have not moved, tomorrow, use it as an opportunity on your lunch break or when you have an extra two minutes to check your voter registration status. And you have until October 7th to actually update or register to vote. So encourage everybody to use tomorrow's holiday to focus to ensure that, and make sure that you are registered to vote.
With that, are there any questions from the city attorney's office, the auditor's office, treasurer's office? Seeing none, are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from tonight's agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive the reading of titles of 30-day legislation? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will the clerk now read to the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance and Governance Committee ordinance is 2323-2024 and 2343-2024. Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee ordinance 2378-24, 3824-40-2024. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 2018, 2372-2024. Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee ordinance is 2347 and 2382-2024. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee ordinance 2404-2024. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee ordinance is 2158, 2350, 2374, 2387-2024. Rules and Policy Committee ordinance 2397-2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any speakers on first reading? No, we do not. Thank you, thank you, thank you. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent. Will the clerk now read those into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 226, 234, 235, 228, 229, 236, 237, 232, 242, 245, X-2024. Finance and Governance Committee ordinance is 2012, 2285, 2291, 2295, 2296, 2309, 2339, 2340, 2341, 2342, 2344, 2345, 2348, 2364, 2381, 2416-2024. Public Service and Transportation Committee Resolution 212X-2024 and ordinances 2293, 2298, 2317, 2325, and 2373-2024. Neighborhoods, Recreation, and Parks Committee ordinance is 2330, 2353, 2436, 2453, 2502, 2513-2024. Workforce, Education, and Labor Committee ordinance 2315-2024. Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee ordinance is 2239, 2385, 2386, 2411-2024. Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee ordinance is 2294, 2413, 2415, 2510, 2511, 2512, 2514-2024. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee ordinance is 2144, 2318, 2380-2024. And Rules and Policy Committee, an appointment from the mayor's office numbered A0166-2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one speaker on the non-agenda portion of the agenda and that's Mr. Nate Wilkins speaking on ordinance 2239. Welcome to council, Mr. Wilkins.
I just want to say, y'all have done a great job for this past year. I do want to say thank you. I will be speaking in the ordinance of CA 40, 2239, 2024, Building and Housing with Shella Favorites, Green, and all members sit up there. First of all, I want to bring to your attention of the property located at 2265. I believe to my knowledge, 2265. And again, I'm coming to you and not in support of this. At the time, this was a single-family dwelling home. What I have done, I created a book with Columbus Community Land Bank properties. First of all, I would like to know why that this property was torn down and today it still sits as a vacant land. And to my knowledge, we talk about housing here. And one thing we don't talk about is stable housing for the elderly or for the middle-class folks out there, or either for the visually impaired, populated, blind, that's people sitting in wheelchairs. Let me go on to another property here, 660, Donothe Street. And again, we're talking about another single-family home. Was torn down with no vacancy notice, no land bank, whatever and whatever. And again, we are tearing down where these homes can be idolized. This is what it looks like now. If I turn over here, you have people that changed hands. The last property that I had sold you was, I think it's for the City of Community Investments, something like that, for a state of forfeiture foreclosure. This only has one, I believe. And here, we are talking about if we want to put something there, we don't want to put the same structure. We won't put something that's bigger and better in architect design for the middle-class or for the disability, or this people that's in wheelchairs. Seem like those people are getting left out. So what I have done here in the library, I had created a book because what I'm doing in my spare time is looking at land bank properties that have state of forfeiture foreclosure. Thank you for my time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wilkins, for your advocacy on ordinance 2239. If there's any follow-up, Director, would you please do so with Mr. Wilkins? Thank you.
I got to President Harden, will do. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments on the consent portion of the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion for approval? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed. We will not proceed with the second reading of 30-day postponed emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance and Governance Committee. Chair, by Councilmember Bangston, Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. First up tonight in the Finance and Governance Committee, our second reading, we have a resolution, I'm sorry, ordinance 2290-2024 to authorize the Director of Department of Finance and Management on behalf of the Department of Technology to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreement for network upgrades to amend the 2024 capital improvements budget to authorize a transfer of $778,070.81 between projects within the Information Services Capital Fund and to authorize the expenditure of $2,215,190. The ordinance relates to the acquisition and implementation of a new Cisco Boundary Network and Cisco Voice-over-IP phone hardware via an existing universal term contract with CDW government. The replacement of this existing legacy infrastructure will improve both the Boundary Network and Voice-over-IP phone performance capacity, security, and ensure that the city continues to keep its Boundary Network and Voice-over-IP phone infrastructure modern and supported. Locations receiving this new phone system include but are not limited to the 1111 North Front Street Building, Department of Public Utilities Administration Building, several recreation and park centers, police substations, fire stations, and many other locations across the city. This ordinance authorizes amending the 2024 capital improvement budget with the transfer of cash and authority between projects. This is necessary to ensure that there is adequate funding in the proper project line item. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have ordinance 2393-2024 to authorize the issuance of limited tax bond anticipation notes in an amount not to exceed $16,150,000 for the purpose of financing the cost of constructing the Starling Street parking garage. To authorize the appropriate, to authorize the appropriation of $2,654,236.53 in the Columbus Downtown TIF Fund, Fund 4453, to authorize the transfer of $2,654,236.53 from the Columbus Downtown TIF Fund to the Mobility Debt Retirement Fund to authorize the transfer of $359,398.32 within the Mobility Debt Retirement Fund to authorize an expenditure of $21,784,450 from the Mobility Enterprise Fund and the Mobility Debt Retirement collectively and to declare an emergency. This ordinance relates to the city's use of limited tax bond anticipation notes to pay down the debt associated with the construction of the Starling Street parking garage. The original debt of $32.5 million was issued in 2020 and TIF proceeds have been used to aggressively pay down that debt. And this is really, again, us constructing those garages for the anticipation of parking and us using those TIF dollars to pay down our debts in a timeframe that's actually sooner than when that debt is due. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President. That's all I have in my committee this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee, chaired by Councilmember Barrosa de Padilla. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. I have one ordinance today in Public Service and Transportation. It's ordinance 2390-2024 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreement for four three-wheel mechanical street sweepers for the Department of Public Service with the Jack Donnie, Donnie, pardon me, Mr. Jack, Companies Incorporated to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,237,384 from the Municipal Motor Vehicle Tax Fund and to declare an emergency. The Department of Public Service, Division of Infrastructure Management, is responsible for cleaning streets throughout the City of Columbus as part of its street sweeping program. The division is in need of four three-wheel The division is in need of four three-wheel mechanical street sweepers to replace existing equipment that has reached the end of its useful life. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Burrosa de Padilla, favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. And I would just like to make a little note that if you do not follow DPS's Instagram or Facebook, that you should, because it gives you helpful hints, like when street sweeping is happening on your street, and what to do if you have unfortunately parked in a place where you might not have wanted to park and where you should find your car. And that's the end of my TED Talk. Thank you. Yes.
This is what you were just telling me about today? My guy Charles, or what's it called?
My buddy Charles.
My buddy Charles.
My buddy Charles. He is really your buddy. You should follow and get helpful tips, especially as we are now in the season of street sweeping. Thank you. That's all for me this evening.
Thank you. I hear it's a whole thing on social media, "My Buddy Charles" and "Our Public Service Departments." I would encourage you to "get hip," as the kids would say.
Because President Harden was not. So yes, please do. We're doing a collab post. Stay tuned.
Do they don't anymore? All right. The next committee to come before council is the Neighborhoods Recreation and Parks Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember De Alkauer. She, in her absence, the vice chair, will read, and that is Councilmember Weich.
Thank you, Council President. I have one ordinance tonight in Neighborhoods Recreation and Parks Committee, and that is 2426 dash 2024, to authorize the transfer of $1,550,000 within the Recreation and Parks Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. Recreation and Parks Department has the need for additional revenue in the area of supplies and services to ensure adequate funding for all necessary expenditures, including payment of community center instructors and repairs and maintenance of parks and facilities. This is not a budget increase, but rather the movement of existing funds from one allowable use to another within the Recreation and Parks Operating Fund. The transferred funds will be replenishing several large projects already underway, including tree stump removals, pavement crack filling, and facility tuck pointing. The transfer difference will be corrected in an equal amount through capital improvement budget pertaining to construction, project, design, and management. Deputy Director, can you speak to the need for the emergency?
Definitely. Councilmember Weich and members of council, the emergency need is we're currently out of appropriation, is what it's called, for our services right now. We would typically wait till the final quarter review, and then that would be corrected at that time, but we are essentially out of service money, so that's the need for this emergency nature. We're stopping services right now. We're stopping class registrations for art camp instructors and things like that, so that's the reason for the emergency nature.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Burrosa de Padilla, favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
That's all I have for this committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Workforce Education and Labor Committee. President Pro Tim Doran is chair of that committee. I am the vice chair of that committee, so in his absence, I will read his ordinances. And so, we'll start with, so I will now introduce ordinance 2075 dash 2024, to authorize and direct the Director of the Mayor's Office of Education to enter into a contract with the Young Men's Christian Association of Central Ohio, or the YMCA, for the purposes of planning and coordinating an after-school program for middle-school youth and providing direct services to Columbus youth, to authorize a transfer of $1 million within the general fund, to authorize expenditure of $1 million from the general fund and declare an emergency. This ordinance supports the work of the city's Office of Education and working to implement an after-school program for middle-school students for the 2024-2025 school year with the YMCA of Central Ohio, Columbus City Schools, and the Boys and Girls Club of Central Ohio. Emergency designation is requested to ensure the funding can be provided to the YMCA so that the program can commence in September 2024. This legislation will continue the work of the Office of Education to provide safe, enriching after-school opportunities for kids across our city. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Burrosa de Padilla, favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed. I'm going to go to the Rules and Policy Committee, which I chair, but President Pro Tim had an ordinance there as well that he would like brought before council. Its ordinance 2421 dash 2024, and is to amend the City Code, Chapter 377, Wage Theft Prevention and Enforcement by repealing and replacing the chapter in its entirety, and to amend City Code, Chapter 2337, Freelance Workers by repealing and replacing the chapter in its entirety. This ordinance repeals and replaces Columbus City Code, Chapter 377, and Chapter 2337, with updated chapters that reflect corrected spelling, grammar, and formatting within the chapters. These changes are also renaming the Wage Theft Prevention and Enforcement Commission to the Labor Commission. This change is recommended due to the expanded role of the commissions as established by ordinance 1016 dash 2023, which created Chapter 2337 Freelance Workers and updated Chapter 377. Renaming the commission will provide clarity to the public and to the commission members of the full scope of the commission's role. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Burrosa de Padilla, favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed. Next committee to come before council is the Health and Human Services Committee, chaired by Councilmember Green. Councilmember LaFleur Joris.
Thank you so much, President Harden, tonight. In our Health Human Services and Equity Committee, I have one ordinance on second reading. It is ordinance 2363 dash 2024, to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Health for the Women, Infants, and Children, or WIC Program, in the amount of $6,802,930 and any additional funds, to authorize the appropriation of $6,802,930 from the unappropriated balance of the Health Department Grants Fund and to declare an emergency. The primary objective of the WIC program is to provide nutritionally desirable food and nutrition education to pregnant and lactating women, infants, and children at risk, who are at nutritional risk here in Franklin County, who meet categorical income and nutritional risk requirements for eligibility. This program serves to safeguard the health of low-income pregnant, postpartum, and breastfeeding women, infants, and children up to age five, who are nutritionally at risk, by providing them nutritious foods and information on healthy eating, including breastfeeding promotion and support. Franklin County WIC currently serves 28,968 clients, and the grant period that we are requesting appropriation of these funds for runs from October 1st of 2024 to September 30th of 2025. This ordinance is submitted as an emergency, so a delay in service and rental contracts do not occur due to the grant start date of October 1st of 2024. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Burrosa de Padilla, favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President. That's all I have tonight in my committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember LaFleur Joris.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President. I have three ordinances in Public Safety and Criminal Justice. The first is 2208, 2024, to authorize the Director of Public Safety, on behalf of the Division of Support Services, to enter into a new contract for maintenance with Agile Network Builders LLC for network connectivity between the city's communication towers and the dispatching centers, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code and to authorize an expenditure of $141,360 from the general fund. This is a leased circuit system that the city uses to tie the radio system sites and dispatch centers together, to operate and in turn to connect them to the state where the primary radio system resides. The radio system is used as a primary source of communications for the Department of Public Safety's dispatch center to public safety units in the field, for internal communications of public safety units, and for interoperability communications between federal, state, and other local public safety agencies. Other departments use the radio system for similar communications with their employees in the field. The system aids the dispatchers by transmitting critical information by voice signal to radio users in the field. Assistant Director Halloran, can you speak to the waiver of competitive bidding, please?
President Harden, Chair Remy, members of council, thank you. Agile Network Builders, the vendor in this case, provides these services to Marx, as you mentioned, on a state-term contract, which benefits the city by being on that same network, thus providing system redundancy and interoperability with Marx and Franklin County equipment, as well as monitored network management. The original contract with Agile covered five years of maintenance, and we would like to extend this contract.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bangston Burrosa de Padilla, favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Next, I have ordinance 2468, 2024, to authorize the Director of Department of Public Safety, on behalf of the Division of Support Services, to enter into a contract with Motorola Solutions, Inc., for the maintenance and support of the city's 800 megahertz radio P25 digital system, in accordance with the sole source provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize an expenditure of $1,089,710.61 from Public Safety's general fund budget and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes the Director of Department of Public Safety to enter into contract with Motorola Solutions for the ongoing maintenance and support of the city of Columbus's 800 megahertz radio system that serves nearly all city departments, including public safety, public utilities, public service, development, and recreation and parks. The radio system is used as a primary source of communications with the Department of Public Safety's dispatch center to public safety units in the field, for internal communications of public safety units, and for interoperability of communications between federal, state, and other local public safety agencies. Other departments use the radio system for similar communications with their employees in the field. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bangston Burrosa de Padilla, favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
And finally, I have ordinance 2470, 2024, to authorize and direct the city attorney to settle the claim of Denise Bauer, to authorize the expenditure of the sum of $195,000.00 in settlement of this claim and to declare an emergency. I'm going to turn this over to City Attorney Deputy Chief of Staff, Brian Shin. Do you have any information you'd like to share regarding this ordinance?
Thank you, Chair Remy, President Harden, members of council. Ms. Bauer is a former employee of the mayor's office. She was employed by the city from 2017 to 2023. After she left her employment with the city, she then asserted claims for unpaid overtime hours. Subsequently, she agreed to a settlement in exchange for releasing any and all claims she might have had against the city. And it is the city attorney's office recommendation that this settlement is in the best interest of the city, and we would respectfully request that council approve the settlement through this ordinance. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Deputy Chief of Staff. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage. Oh, sorry. Councilmember Bangston.
Just one question, Mr. Attorney. What are we looking at here if we were to take this on? Like, what would the potential cost be to us?
I don't have that specific figure, Councilmember Bangston, but I will say that the settlement amount also included her attorney's fees. So, we believe that it could have been a higher number, or we would have not settled.
Right. And I just figured that much, but I just didn't know if you had that number.
I apologize. I don't have that.
And thank you for the clarification on attorney's fees, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bangston Burrosa de Padilla, favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
That is all I have in Public Safety and Criminal Justice this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The final committee to come before council is the Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee. That is chaired by Councilmember Weich. Councilmember LaFleur Joris.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight, I have three ordinances in Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee. First, I have 2091 dash 2024, to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to establish a contract with Utility Truck Equipment Incorporated for the purchase of two 60-foot bucket trucks for the Division of Power, to authorize the waiver of competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Code, and to authorize an expenditure of $782,510 from the Division of Electricity Operating Fund. The bucket trucks will be used to maintain the city's electrical distribution system and other related infrastructure. Originally, the purchasing office opened formal bids on July 5th, 2024, for this purchase, and one majority bid was received. After the bidder submitted minimal exceptions to the bid specifications, the Division of Power determined there would be no advantage to rebid due to long lead times. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Burrosa de Padilla, favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, I have 2186 dash 2024, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify and increase the master service agreement with American Municipal Power Incorporated to provide funding for participation in journeyman line worker safety and training programs, and to authorize the expenditure of $84,360 from the Electricity Operating Fund to waive the competitive bidding provisions of City Code. Line workers construct and maintain electric poles, transformers, and lines. The Division of Power has an active journeyman line worker training program with another vendor, who until American Municipal Power Incorporated's program was the sole company offering this training locally. Of the two programs to offer the training locally, AMP's program cost per attendee is the lowest-cost option. Therefore, it is in the best interest of the city to waive the provisions of competitive bidding and modify the master service agreement with AMP to include journeyman line worker safety and training. The division desires to have three two-week classes this year after enrolling attendees in two last year. The training program is expected to run for four years, with funding provided annually and contingent on mutual agreement between the city and the vendor, approval by ordinance of this legislative body, and appropriation and certification of funds by the city auditor. Let me pause there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Burrosa de Padilla, favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Last, I have 2327 dash 2024, to authorize the Public Service Director with engagement from Columbus Public Health to support a grant application to the United States Environmental Protection Agency's Environmental and Climate Justice Community Change Grant Program, to authorize the execution of a grant and other requisite agreements with the United States Environmental Protection Agency, Local Matters, and other entities provided for the acceptance and administration of said grant award or subawards, on behalf of the city of Columbus, to authorize the expenditure of any awarded funds and the refund of any unused funds. The U.S. EPA has issued a notice of funding opportunity for approximately $2 billion in discretionary grant funding through this Environmental and Climate Justice Community Grant, Community Change Grant Program. The Community Change Grants are intended to fund community-driven projects that address climate challenges and reduce pollution while strengthening communities through thoughtful implementation. This is the first and only funding round for this program. The city meets its criteria to be eligible to form a statutory partnership with a community-based nonprofit organization in Columbus. Department of Public Service, Columbus Public Health, and Sustainable Columbus staff have been working with Local Matters, the Columbus CBO, and the Bloomberg American Cities Climate Challenge to develop a Community Change Grant application, seeking more than $10 million to develop and support community resilience hubs, reduce waste, and support a circular economy, and invest in workforce development programs that reduce greenhouse gas emissions. The U.S. EPA has requested to see a signed agreement with Local Matters, causing the need to amend this ordinance to emergency in order to meet the EPA's preferred timeline. Director, anything else you would add?
Good evening, President Harden, Chair Weich, other members of council. I think you've got it covered. We are asking this evening for an emergency, just to meet the grant deadline.
Thank you. Any questions for my colleagues? Seeing none, first, I move to amend this ordinance to emergency.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Burrosa de Padilla, favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you. Next, I move for passage as amended.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Burrosa de Padilla, favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Adopt, passed.
Thank you. That is all I have for my committee this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Seeing no further business to come before council, is there a motion to adjourn? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Burrosa de Padilla, favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
We have several non-agenda.